Do I really think that that's going to happen? Reality for being a riverkeeper for 18 years tells me it's going to be a big mountain of move to get y'all to stand up to Alabama Power and make them get rid of this stuff. It's what's being done in surrounding states. I mean, Southern Company is doing it in Georgia. We've got it going on in many other states, and I'm sure you'll hear plenty more about that from other people. But, I mean, we just got to stop being the caboose in Alabama. We got to stop making the same mistakes over and over again and being a laughingstock of the nation. If we don't do the right thing now, future generations are going to be shaking their heads saying, "What the heck were they thinking? How could they have done this? Why on earth did they choose to leave this stuff in place?" And waste a bunch of money in the process doing it. So, please reconsider the preordained solution. Cap in place is not going to work. It's not going to work. This is a stream. It's a living stream. Rattlesnake Creek is underneath the site, and you can't make it go away. It's currently flowing underneath the dam, through the dam at Rattlesnake Lake. And nothing that Alabama Power is doing is going to stop that from continuing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, tell us your full name and any group or organization you might be speaking on behalf of, and keep an eye on the clock.
I sure will. Thank you. My name is Keith Johnston. I'm the Director of the Alabama Office of the Southern Environmental Law Center. Thank you for this public hearing concerning the draft coal combustion residual permits for Plant Gorgas Permit 64-12. We're still in the process of reviewing the draft permit supporting materials for the legacy ash pond, gypsum pond, and landfills. And my comments tonight are about a summary of more thorough comments that we will submit in writing by the comment deadline. SELC and our clients continue to be concerned with ADEM's rush to permit every one of Alabama Power's legacy coal ash ponds in their current locations. Particularly, our concerns surround ADEM's push to allow the continued pollution emanating from these ash ponds for decades, if not more, after these permits are finalized. An artificial cap will not solve these pollution problems. We know solutions do exist that will alleviate the pollution problems of the legacy sites, and these solutions are not complicated and are being implemented in other states. Legacy coal ash should be moved to dry-lined landfills out away from water sources, including groundwater and surface water. Getting coal ash out of water not only significantly reduces ground and surface water pollution, but it avoids the threat of catastrophic release such as Kingston, Tennessee, in 2008, the Dan River, North Carolina spill in 2014. Importantly, don't just take SELC or our clients' words for it. Look to the EPA. In an article published by CNN on December the 5th, EPA Administrator Michael Regan said the administration will act, quote, "will act to protect communities." And based on my prior experience, if there is coal ash in contact with groundwater, that's putting the health and safety of communities at risk and requires our attention. As you likely know, he was referencing Plant Berry's coal ash pond, which has already been permitted to be capped in place by ADEM, and in groundwater, where it continues to pollute and will continue to pollute. Plant Gorgas's legacy coal ash pond is located somewhere that is just as problematic, if not more so, than Plant Berry's. Alabama Power chose, out of expediency's sake, to dam a water of the United States and make a waterway their personal dumping pit while charging ratepayers to do it. Alabama Power created Rattlesnake Lake, and now almost 25 million tons of coal ash sits in the pond that the power company created, and it leaches into the ground and surface waters, including the Mulberry Fork of the Black Warrior River. Alabama Power will never be able to keep water out of a natural creek and river drainage, and the legacy ash will continue to pollute under this permit. This is what ADEM plans to permit, as the current permit is written. The Rattlesnake Creek drainage should have never been the site of a permanent waste facility, especially one with known toxic pollution that Alabama Power cannot control. ADEM would never permit a waste facility in an area like this today. ADEM has it within their regulatory power to require more mitigation, but the agency has proven that it will not do so. For specifics, the draft permit and Alabama Power's application materials for the legacy ash pond lack sufficient analysis, data, and provisions in key areas such as groundwater characterization, empowerment stability, enclosure planning. The draft permit enclosure plans also allows future groundwater degradation, future empowerment of leachate, and contamination of state waters by post-closure discharges. For example, we do not know the true extent of groundwater contamination, and this contamination has not been fully characterized in application materials. There should be modeling to show the true extent of this contamination. We cannot determine the depth of the coal ash and how much coal ash will be left in the groundwater when we have inadequate characterization of the coal ash's relation to groundwater. We have no coal ash borings in the legacy pond within the coal ash footprint and no estimate of how much coal ash will remain saturated under these current permit plans and closure plans. A final CCR permit should not be issued until we have this information. Furthermore, capping the coal ash will not prevent groundwater and surface water contamination. Water will continue to flow through the legacy ash and create pollution. Alabama Power's own data shows that ash will be left in groundwater under the cap, and they won't be able to stop water from flowing through the legacy ash when it is piled in a valley where a significant amount of water drains. Even if the proposed cap has zero defects and allowed no infiltration from directly over the top of the ash, which is unlikely, there will still be contaminants leaching from the ash into surrounding waters and infiltration from the sides and below. In addition, nothing in the draft permit or closure plans evaluates or requires an estimation of the volume of water that can be expected to infiltrate into the covered ash through the groundwater through the cap. The permit shouldn't be issued until we have this information. We also know that contamination currently discharges from the site. CCR-contaminated water has been transported and accumulated beyond the geographic scope of where Alabama Power has been looking at this site. There is no indication or estimation that that accumulation of CCR-contamination outside of the scope of the coal ash pond has been done. There's been no complete delineation. In addition, there should be modeling to determine how long it might take to achieve complete remediation of the site and a reduction of the contamination to groundwater protection standards. This information has not been provided by the power company. The utility should also provide public information which compares excavation and removal versus Alabama Power's current closure in place plans. The public has a right to know how those plans compare. In short, this draft permit does not satisfy the requirements in the federal and the state CCR rules. ADEM should go back and require Alabama Power to provide information that truly shows the extent of contamination and how Alabama Power will solve this problem long-term under the current permitting system. Alabama Power wants to operate in perpetuity an unlined ash dump in a stream valley next to the Mulberry Fork. This is against the federal and state rules.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
As you are aware, you can file your full report.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, tell us your full name and any group or organization you're associated with and are speaking on behalf of, and just keep an eye on the timer. Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Kenny. I'm a staff scientist with Black Warrior Riverkeeper. I have a Master's in Science in Civil and Environmental Engineering from the University of Alabama at Birmingham. I've been reviewing ADEM's permits in my job at Black Warrior Riverkeeper for 16 years. The gypsum pond is being handled the right way. You guys are, well, you're not requiring them, but Alabama Power is removing the CCR from that pond, putting it into a lined landfill, which is the proper way that CCRs should be handled. So, the bulk of my comments tonight will refer just to the ash pond at Rattlesnake Lake. So, it's my understanding that since the federal, since the EPA issued the 2015 CCR rule, that ADEM has drafted several versions of their own state program. As of yet, none of those versions have been approved by the EPA. So, it's my understanding that until ADEM actually has an approved program from the EPA, that the department doesn't even have the authority to issue this permit in its current form. As some of my colleagues have mentioned, the ash pond at Gorgas was formed by damming Rattlesnake Creek. The closure plans that were included in the permit application seem to demonstrate that the coal ash will be consolidated in the drainage course of Rattlesnake Creek and its tributaries. Now, when a creek is buried, it doesn't disappear. That's not how creeks work. It will continue to seek, the water that flows will continue to seek the path of that creek underground. The toxic coal ash will continue to be in contact with the water that's flowing underneath that cap. So, you can put a cap on it to try to keep rainwater out, but the groundwater is still going to come into contact with that ash, and the course of Rattlesnake Creek is still going to come into contact with that ash. It's going to continue to leach the toxic metals that have already been found in the groundwater around the pond. Those groundwater violations have been present ever since Alabama Power started testing the groundwater, started drilling wells. The more wells that they drill around the ash pond, the more violations they find. And that's been seen year over year. They're finding more and more violations of the groundwater protection standards in each of those wells. And that's for seriously toxic constituents like arsenic, lithium, molybdenum. They've found, in the past, in 2020, there was a radium violation. They've had a violation for fluoride recently. And nothing in the plan is going to stop that contamination of the groundwater. Also, according to both the federal and state regulations, the closure plan must demonstrate that if the coal ash is left in place, it will control, minimize, or eliminate to the maximum extent feasible post-closure infiltration of liquids into the water and releases of CCR leachate or contaminated runoff to the ground or surface waters or to the atmosphere. This plan does not meet that requirement of the federal and state CCR regulations. Now, the final point that I wanted to make is with Alabama Power's selected remedy of monitored natural attenuation. So, aside from consolidating the ash and capping the ash with a semi-permeable, with a low permeability liner, monitored natural attenuation is the only additional kind of remedy that they have selected. Monitored natural attenuation is basically just a fancy way of saying, "Do nothing and continue to sample and test the groundwater around the pond." So, according to Alabama Power's assessment of corrective measures, the power company themselves noted that decisions to utilize MNA, or monitored natural attenuation, as a remedy or remedy component should be thoroughly supported by site-specific data and analysis. Alabama Power has provided none of that site-specific data or analysis to support the use of monitored natural attenuation at this location. According to Alabama Power's own estimates, monitored natural attenuation will take most likely two decades or more, if it even works at all, to remove the contaminants in the And in a letter submitted, written by the Alabama Department of Environmental Management in November of 2019, ADEM notes that MNA requires that an aquifer have sufficient capacity for that attenuation to take place. Alabama Power has yet to demonstrate how monitored natural attenuation will work on the Integran GNX President, evaluate whether it is feasible to remedy based upon site-specific conditions at Plant Gorgas, or even analyze whether the aquifer has sufficient capacity for attenuation to take place. So, in summary, I believe that ADEM does not even have the authority to issue this permit until it has an approved EPA, a state program that has been approved by the EPA. Alabama Power's solution does not comply with federal and state regulations, and the selected remedy is not even guaranteed to work. So, this permit should not be issued in its current form. They should go back to the drawing board and find a solution that will actually work. And as far as the other states around the southeast and throughout the country, most of them have come to the conclusion that the only way to properly remediate a coal ash pond is to excavate the coal ash, move it to a lined landfill, or recycle it into concrete or some other beneficial uses. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Sherri, tell us your full name and who you are associated with, any group or organization, and speak mainly so the co-reporter can get your comments.
Yes, sir. My name is Sherri Saunders. I'm an environmentalist out of Coleman, Alabama. I am a member of the Alabama Waste Sludge Awareness Group. That is a new group that the Rivers Alliance, the Riverkeepers, have brought about here recently to deal with the waste sludge situation, protein rendering of chicken and things like that. That gets also dumped in the river, sort of like the thousands of gallons of chemical contaminants that our governor signed a statement, a piece of paper, that gave the right for these power companies, these companies, to just dump straight into our river. So, I'm speaking on behalf of a group of people, of citizens that have come together that have concerns about these chemicals in our environment. I also stand here as the President of the Alabama Medical Freedom Alliance, who for the last four years has worked very diligently here in Montgomery, for example, the vaccine questions and the vaccine laws that have come about. So, I have been working for several years in this state as an environmentalist, helping the citizens. So, I come before you today speaking as a mother, a citizen of the state, someone who lives not a mile from the Mulberry Fork. And what I would like to begin with is I want to thank the Alabama Department of Environmental Management for allowing us to come and speak tonight and giving us this opportunity to get things off our chest. We out here feel like you don't listen to us and that you don't care. We understand that the power of Alabama Power and the Alabama Public Service Commission is the elephant in the room that we're not speaking about. So, I want to speak about that for just a second. We have representatives of our Alabama Public Service Commission, Twinkle, Kavanaugh, Chip Beaker, let me check my notes here, Jeremy Oden. I hate that I forgot his name. In fact, that's the position I hope to take here. What I've decided to do in the near future is run for the Alabama Public Service Commission. I've been thinking about politics for a long time, which is why I've been an environmentalist for 25 years. I wanted a platform. This is a platform. I'm here today to talk about the opportunity that you have right now to make a change of temperature in the discussions that takes place between Alabama Power, the Public Service Commission, and this group right here. We all know that this problem exists. We all know that you feel like you only have so much power due to the elephant on your back. What I would like to do is briefly run down some facts. And as you listen to those facts, I want you to think about a song that was written by Teddy Gentry, who is an environmentalist. He's a member of the Alabama band up there in Fort Payne. It's called "Pass It On Down." When you get a chance after this meeting, I want you to Google that. It's a song. It's an old Alabama song. But "Pass It On Down" is a song that he wrote to speak about the importance of our rivers, our water. Water is life, and to start with. Alabama Power stores 100 million tons of toxic coal ash. 55 million tons are in three ash ponds in the Black Warrior River, Plant Gorgas, Plant Miller, Plant Green County, and a gypsum pond that's also in question. There's an estimated 30 years it will take to disperse all the chemical contaminants in the environment if right now we were able to magically pull the chemical contaminants in these ponds, in these areas in our waters. If we were able to just pull it away, it would still take 30 years to hopefully repair our environment. In Kingston, Tennessee, there was a coal ash disaster when a dam failed. Do you know here, the state of Alabama is the only state in the United States that does not have a dam safety program? Did you know that? I'm going to run a platform of creating a dam safety program so that now the state of Alabama can provide maintenance and oversee these dams that could possibly, for example, in Kingston, when the dam collapsed, a coal ash dam, it killed 30 people immediately. 250 were injured. Over 300 acres was covered in toxic coal ash, and that was a big mess to clean up. It was also a big black eye. They knew that there was a problem, and I'm telling you right now, we have a problem. These dams have not been inspected because there is no, literally no one here that's their job. If we think that Alabama Power is going to look us in the face and tell us the truth, then you shouldn't be in this job because you don't deserve to be there if you trust people who have never, ever, once done the right thing or followed laws that have been put into place. Alabama rivers and streams contain more aquatic species than any other state in the United States. Did y'all know we were number one in aquatic biodiversity? We're number one. The Black Warrior River has 127 freshwater fish species, four are endangered. We have 33 crayfish species, 36 species of mussels, 15 turtle species, one federally threatened, endangered salamander. We have numerous species. We have five rare species that occur only in the Black Warrior River in the entire world. It's your job to protect that because our job here as citizens is to protect our important possessions, and our waterways are an important possession. And your job is to protect that. Your job is not to allow yourself to be threatened or to feel threatened by the elephant in the room, the Public Service Commission and Alabama Power. We could use the same methods that are being used in Virginia, Georgia, North and South Carolina to remove these contaminants from these unlined ponds to aligned ponds. Those are the states that the gentleman was speaking of before me. The Rattlesnake Lake Dam of coal ash carries a classification of high-hazard potential for carrying severe economic, environmental, and potential loss of life with a dam failure like what happened in Kingston, Tennessee. It is your responsibility to step forth and either create a dam safety program or let me do it for you. Because as a citizen and as an environmentalist, not a year and a half ago, my house, my driveway, my front yard was sprayed with bio sludge that Tyson had dropped from a River Valley plant. It was in a movie that the Riverkeepers made. Next month, I want to have another movie come out about the contamination that I worked with, with Brenda Hampton up in Lawrence County with the East Water Lawrence Authority. What I want you to understand is you have an activist in this state who is not scared to stand against the Alabama Public Service Commission and Alabama Power. And I ask that you find that courage in your heart and do what's right for this state.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next speaker is Jackie Franklin.
Jackie.
I mean Jackie Franklin, I'm sorry.
My name is Jackie Franklin, and I am a resident on the river. I live directly on the river. I am bitterly against this proposal of leaving the coal ash in place, which will result in leaching into the groundwater. This covering up the problem is just a Band-Aid for a problem that has existed for about 100 years. The ash is toxic to the public and to animals. I am asking you to deny the permit to leave it in place. Alabama Power has made billions-plus on the back of the public and to our detriment. The environment has suffered in this area because of lax regulations. Let's remedy some of this destruction by making Alabama Power remove the toxic substances and dispose of it with the least impact on our environment. Heavy metals and other toxic substances cause cancer, birth defects, and autoimmune diseases. We as a society are better than this. I don't know if the decision has already been made. I certainly hope not. But I am asking you to make Alabama Power clean up their mess. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Tom Arnold. If Tom tells you name, if you are associated with any group or organization, appreciate your comments.
Thank you. My name's Tom Arnold. I'm resident of the Rattlesnake Lake area, and I don't have any affiliation with any vested groups or organizations, speaking as a citizen. I think the comments that I have heard so far indicate that the removal of the ash in Rattlesnake Lake is the best solution. I think there are many people around with any kind of scientific basis who would argue against that. It is expensive. It is time-consuming, and you've got a problem with what to do with it and where to take it. But from my perspective, it'd be nice if it wasn't around me. I'm going to move on now to some of the techniques that I would like to see and have not heard about as yet. Number one, the land surrounding Rattlesnake Lake has already been irreparably raped. All the surface soil and vegetation is gone. I don't know how many acres it is, 500 to 1,000 acres, somewhere around there. I drive by it every day. But that said, I would like publicly available information to be given about the levels of toxins in organic elements, radioactive elements as well, in the coal combustion I'd like that data to be published on a map with the concentrations of those substances and periodically updated. That's a fairly easy computerized way to do that, the way they image satellites and look for changes in vegetation, say. That's fairly easy to I think we need to know what the concentration of these potential toxins and radioactive elements are and what the projections will be for them at the end of this project, which as I understand it, is about 20 years from now. And then we'll have to deal with Miller after that. I think this data ought to be published publicly and periodically and made available to the public. I think that periodic data should include maps with the groundwater monitoring wells, the concentrations on the concentrations on different terrestrial areas, the surface of the soil, and especially downstream in the Warrior River at periodic and at predetermined distances from the site. I think the public ought to be advised about any restrictions of access to this area. They've got a road around it. It looks like they'll probably build a wall of some sort, but that may keep people out. We don't know about animals, don't know about birds. What would be the effect on those species that have less restriction of access to this area than humans? I'd also like to know how the runoff water on the surface will affect the Rattlesnake Creek bed and where that runoff water from the surface will go, because it will also contain some of these toxins, although perhaps in less level. What are you going to do with that water? That brings to the question, what will this look like at the close of the project? What's the final plan? I'd like to see a picture, some sort of visual representation of what it was before, what it looks like during the process, and what the final vision of whoever made this plan is. What's the area going to look like? How long will access have to be restricted? I think these visual renditions would be immensely important to the public and immensely important to the people who make them, because they're going to make some visual rendition of the final project. They're going to look at the images, and they will have different ideas as those images progress and change. We've heard a lot of talk about science these days. That's the way you do it, to ask questions and to reevaluate, to not start with a predetermined conclusion about what to do. At least, that's the way I was taught. Final point is if this permit is not approved, and I think others have spoken to the momentum of public pressure, but if it's not approved, what's going to be done with this area then? Is it going to be left as it is? The big mess you ought to go there and look at. You ought to drive by it. You ought to get Alabama Power to give you permission to drive into it, which we can't do. I look at it on the road. A lot of thought needs to be gone, given to this. I don't know whether you want to approve this project or not, but if it's approved, the concerns about the levels of toxins, the runoff, the downstream effects on the Warrior River on fauna and flora need to be strongly considered, and those things need to be monitored on a periodic basis. If it's not approved, then somebody needs to get a plan real quick about what to do with this area. I applaud you all for coming here to listen to the citizens, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Okay, our next speaker is Cindy Lowery. Okay, Cindy, tell us whether you're speaking on behalf of yourself or some other organization approved.
Yeah, I'm speaking on behalf of the Alabama Rivers Alliance. And I appreciate you guys saying later, I'm sorry that I'm, I think I'm the last one. My policy director was supposed to be here, and he had an unfortunate tragic loss of a friend, so he was not able to speak. So I'm going to make a short general statement, and we will submit longer technical comments in writing. So as I mentioned, I'm here today representing the Alabama Rivers Alliance. We're an organization that spent more than two decades fighting to protect rivers in Alabama from ecological alteration and pollution. Much harm was done to our rivers and streams prior to the Clean Water Act and other fundamental environmental laws. Unfortunately, those laws were not around soon enough to stop the damming of Rattlesnake Creek for coal ash storage. And yes, let's call it what it is. It is Rattlesnake Lake, which means like all other lakes in Alabama, it is really a dammed-up river. Today, if anyone, even Alabama Power came along and tried to dam up an entire creek to dump waste with toxic chemicals and heavy metals in it with no type of protective liner, it would not be allowed. While we can't change the past, we can make sure this mistake does not continue to pollute the Mulberry Fork and the groundwater aquifer beneath it. The facts are that this coal ash, as it is stored right now, is in violation of not only the current federal CCR regulations, but also other laws that govern the waters of the state. We all know how much rain Alabama gets, and the scientists and engineers and geologists in the room know that most of Alabama's surface waters are directly connected to groundwater. Alabama Power's own data shows that at the 37 groundwater monitoring wells near the Gorgas Ash Pit, there are excessively high levels of arsenic, beryllium, boron, cadmium, cobalt, lithium, molybdenum, and sulfate. 34 of these wells have been polluted above federal advisory levels. To pretend that somehow capping this coal ash and leaving it in place can ever be done in such a way that will be able to prevent discharges to ground and surface waters is simply not realistic. Many of our neighboring states' governments and other utilities themselves have already come to the realization that cap and close is not safe or adequate. The Alabama Rivers Alliance will be submitting more technical comments in writing, but my simple ask for this hearing is that the plan to cap and close this ash pond not be allowed to go forward as-is, and that Alabama Power be required to properly store all of their coal ash away from rivers, groundwater, and communities in upland adequately lined landfills and to recycle whatever can be recycled safely.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I think you are the last speaker, and since there are no further speakers, please be advised that unless otherwise notified, the public comment period will end at 5:00 PM on Thursday, December 23, 2021. All comments must be received at the office of the department in Montgomery by that time. After consideration of all oral and written comments, the department will make its determination regarding the proposed permit actions and prepare responses to all relevant comments received. Thank you for your participation this evening. This hearing is adjourned.